Developing young people and education. So we have to refocus and then restore. The pandemic has impacted a lot of people. Impacted our students, our staff, even us as a team and a board, the academy. It has worn on us as well. So we have to restore as a group to be back. So over the next two days, we hope to accomplish much of that. Our list starts with work to accomplish the great comeback. Thank you very much.
Good evening. If you will, I want you to read your senior folder. Your coming down schools folder. The data I want to share with you down here in there. I wanted you to be able to see a large copy of what we're talking about. I tried to protect it from the screen when we did that. Large one, yes. So I wanted to make sure you had that in front of you. We're going to talk about the strategic plan within Iowa. And I'm taking through the strategic plan. We're going to talk about, I want you to see a historical picture of why our test scores went up. What happened when we got a renorming. And that's all I want to do. Yes, we do the strategic plan. And then we're going to repeat the results that we had in 2021. In your folder, you have an audio of the strategic plan, the colored copy of that. This is what we did when we created. When we came here and met at our town hall, we made everything down. What measures were written down on a whole basic page. The requests that we had from the parent, they weren't easy to read. Something that would be easier to read. They've further been color coded to tell if we met the goals or if we met our targets or didn't meet our targets. And then we can stretch it out and you can see the years from the beginning of the plan until we finished that in 2020. And all of that you can see on the bottom. So when we look at this, this will be what we'll see from now on. I'll be a little bit about last year. But there was not a lot of data on it. We didn't have test scores together. So you'll see up on number one, we have successful students. We got measure number 1.2. The percent of students scoring level three or higher on math are good. The 2018, 19 score was actually a 50.5, feels around that top line. Then in 2019, 20, we didn't have any data because we didn't get any test last year. So we put an A in there and left it quiet because it was green or red. But it meaningful to not meet that target. Then I added a column that says the actual 2021 score. And then I wanted to put the target aside so we can all see what the target was. Everybody following me? You have that one on top of you? So you can see I colored it red because we did not meet our target. Our target was a 54.8 and that number was 28.9. 28.9. And we all, we talked about test scores across the state, really across the nation, whatever. I see with the drop in scores because of COVID. So as we look at that column that says actual 2021, you can see 1.2. All three of those are for math, reading, science. We did not meet the target. You'll see what the target actually was and what our actual score is. When we go into the 41, 22, I will take out the target column so that this does not stretch out all the way on the page. So every year, it'll be left with a color coded number. So you'll maybe get that target or not. And then what would be on the target is next year. The 1.2 in the elevator is the one that you'll recall at a board meeting earlier in the year. You all asked us to add a measure for the faith schools. And that's where we added that in the highlight of that elevator. Because it was a new target when we set the baseline for this year. And that number was 23 because it did not change from the previous year. And then the data comes out from 21, 22 will be what we use in our target. We could drop that by down by three to 20 and then down to 17. The reduction in the gap of all the testing areas, you can see the target was 20, 28. We ran a 26, so we did not meet that. And then that's the first part there in the successful students. If you will, we are looking down to get another time to color and take out the document. It looks like this.
Of course, Ron does that. That's going to go above it. The doctor.
Here, we're going to take notes for this. I believe we have got the agenda.
Thank you.
Has been moved to probably seven that we have got the agenda. You just read it in. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. This chart is a, it starts for the mathematics EOG in the year 2005. And some people like looking at data in different ways. This is easy to me, for me to read because it is very neat, very orderly. But it's hard to really understand when you see trend lines going up and down, other than just looking at the numbers. But what my point is, what I want to show you is, if you'll see what's highlighted in the rose color, those are the years that we had a renorm. And what a renorming test is, the state will evaluate the curriculum every five to seven years. Whenever the curriculum is changed, obviously the tests have to be changed in order to match what goes along with the curriculum. When that happens, we see a dramatic drop in our scores. And so I wanted you to see that in 2006, overall for the LEA, we went from an 85.1 to a 55.7. So we took a 30-point drop. The state went from an 87.3 to a 63.4. If you look over to 2013, you'll see that we were 80.1 and we dropped to a 34.5. Anybody remember what 2013 was? That was the year that we had common core for the first time. So when you look at it, what I want you to notice is what happens the next year. Typically, we don't see a big jump the next year. But the reason I wanted you to see this is so I can explain why these numbers are skewed a bit. In 2014, we were allowed to go to five achievement levels. So instead of having levels one, two, three, and four, the state approved for us to have levels one, two, three, four, and five. Essentially, what happened, the students who were level twos that failed within one standard error of passing, they became the new level three. And all the level threes became fours and all the level fours became fives. So what they did is they essentially opened up another group that was a proficient score. That is why you see a 10-point increase. Then the next year, we went up two points, which is a big jump. And I'll tell you, on average, in Cumberland County since 2005, a good increase for us is between 0.5 and two points. Anything above two is really good because traditionally we just don't see it that much. And so that was a good year, but the reason that jump was included was because the state allowed us to start using those retest scores again. We actually, they called it the second opportunity because we can't call it a retest. But that was what that jump is for. And then as we get into the curriculum, you can start seeing, we went from a, really a 44.5 when you start using the same rules all the way across the board. And so we went 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, we were at a 50.5. So my point here is it took us six years to move six points. We don't jump 20 points in two or three years. I mean, you can look at this historically going all the way back. That just has not happened. That was in math. If you look down at reading, I want you to see the same type thing. 2007, we were at 84.2. 2008, when the test was renormed, we dropped to a 52.5. Then in 2013, we went from a 71.6 to a 41.2. Then you saw we bounced that first year because we had the opportunity for five achievement levels. And then you can see we stayed at a 57 and then actually started going down a little bit. If you see what I'm trying to show you. That's one way to look at it. The other way to look at it are the other two pieces of paper in your folder. I like looking at it this way better because I can see a chart, a line graph. And you can see what's going up and what's going down. But I included on the very bottom, so you'll know what those colors are. Three is third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and then the LEA and the state. Because I wanted you to see the state mirrors what we've done in Cumberland County. When Ezra renorming across the state, scores dropped dramatically. Then it takes several years to build those back up. And then we'll have another renorming year and the scores will drop dramatically. And then we'll build it back up. And you see that's the pattern we're at right now. But on both of these charts, I just want you to notice the far right. With this COVID year, we are almost in the same situation test score wise as we are the year of a renorming. So I want to put that out there so you'll notice as we look at our test scores to think that we're going to go from a 20, 28.9 to a 54.8. It's better, that's just not going to happen. So we have to be able to reset these scores. We have to be able to look at what we've done and how we're going to be able to move forward. And I just want to let you know that's what we're going to be looking at. But I wanted you to see the context of why we're saying we go back and we look at this historically. So that is, that is all for 1.2 that we're going to be looking at. 2.1, this is the area really that Ruben works with a lot. The percent of teachers retained yearly. Our target this year was 85.51. And we actually were at an 85.1, which is in the red. But I think that is very, very positive with all the teachers that left and everybody that was getting out, retirement and everything else that they did. So we didn't hit the target, but I think that's still a good mark for us. The ratio of Hispanic teachers and Hispanic students in the district, the target was to be at a 4.5 to a 14.1. So it'd be 4.5% of our teaching staff would be Hispanic while 14.1% of our student body was Hispanic. And we were not there. You see, we were in the twos. The African-American ratio was to be a 40 to a 44. We were actually a 40.1, but our African-American population and the student population went up a little bit. So really I could diagonally shade that. Part of that was green and part of that was red. But as far as the staff ratio, we did, we did hit that target. Teachers exceeding or meeting growth, EVOS scores, we were told will not be used this year. So I put an A in that. If we're given any ability to be able to see if teachers met growth, we'll be able to populate that. But I was on a webinar last week and we were told that they would not be used for that purpose. The 3.2, the number of students assigned to out of school suspension, that is not in this print. That number, our target was 7,050. Our number last year was 146 because we were out of school all year, essentially. But we did go for that last nine weeks and we did track the data there. I do want you to go back and look at the column to the left of that. The one that says 5247. Just so you'll know, years down the road, if somebody asks, we were out of school after May the 13th, I believe it was. But I went ahead and took the number that we had and multiplied it by 1.25, which would account for another quarter of the year that we were out of school. So that would be a more valid of a number to be able to. And we were down already. You can see we went from 7,954 out of school suspensions to 5,247. And our target this year was to be 7,050 and we were at 146. Obviously, that number is skewed on the opposite end of what we saw with the test scores. So we will, we will populate that again this year as we start tracking that. And we have a new dashboard that we're going to be using in Cumberland County. And I looked at it today and we are on target to be about half of where we were back in 18, 19, which is a good thing. We want to be a lower number. So we will continue to track that as we go along. The number of students, or percent of students graduating in four years. Our target was an 88.28 and we are at an 84.2. When I shared the data with you two weeks ago, the state board met the first, I think it was the first of September and released the data. That is always a preliminary release. They give us in the districts, three weeks to look and see, do we have any errors? And if we have errors, we can fix those and submit them back to DPI. We found two errors at E. Smith High School, not to their fault. Gretchen and Mr. Underdo did a great job working with Juanita all year long. We had two students that were at E. Smith that went to Tar Heel Challenge. Tar Heel Challenge is not a recognized high school for a graduating diploma. So that counted against E. Smith because they still were on E. Smith's record. But we knew that those two students went to Foster PM, which is an online school that does graduate students. And so we appealed that to DPI once we were able. Donnell and I both called the school, tried to get up with people and they finally responded after school was out. And they gave us documentation. We submitted that to DPI and they approved it this week. So E. Smith went from an 83.6 to an 84.0. So that will go up a little bit. Won't affect us overall because we have 3,978 students in the cohort. But it does help E. Smith and I just kudos to what they do. That's a model of how we want to make sure that we're working and tracking our students. But you can see that's where the number is there. The other number that changed as a result of that is our overall performance composite. When we had the initial scores, when we looked at those, it was a 35.6. But our actual performance composite is a 36.8. Not much of a difference, but you know, we're looking, I mean, anytime we can go up, we want to go up and get the credit. And we figure that is attributed to all the scores of the tests that we did late in summer school. So that, if we get any more updates in October, I'll share all those with you. The 4.1 are the stakeholder of the committed communities. And you can see the gray one there for 4.1. Mr. Whitley and I worked with Hanover Research and designed a survey that we gave to stakeholders. They filled that out and 3.9 was our score in 2019, 20. This year, our target was to be at 3.95 and we were at 3.89. With that, we get feedback from the community, from the teachers, from students, from everybody involved in Cumberland County schools. And Mr. Whitley will use that as we start building programs that we do for the county. The community 4.3, number of participants at family engagement events. You can see our target was 72,500 and we actually had 89,600 documented in those events. So that one is green. 4.4, the businesses, the faith-based, university, military, community with district and schools. Our target was 225. We actually were at 314, so that one is green. And then the final one is the number of parents accessing the parent portal, which I thought this number would be higher with all the students that were online and parents doing that. But our target was 35,687 and we actually had 42,403. So I wanted you to see this. We talked about it a lot. We color coded it, try to make it a little bit easier for you to see. And we will continue to update this and then look at where our targets need to be as we move forward, 2020, 21, 22, and then into 23, 24. Any questions for me on that? Thank you.
Ron, I got a question. Is there a way that you could make a comparison between the students that graduated when we did through a testing to the next class? To see if their experience is different? And their performance in number, if one of college, the military, whatever. So you could make a comparison to see what was their type of folk who really had one. The student's performance was there within the other phase of education.
We can, Cumberland County College, we do the next survey. And we already have that in the right now. We have them in the car, in the military. They want to be in school, before you're sold. And that would be exciting here now. I think it's important. But we'll be there.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. All right. Tonight, we're very excited, of course, about the great comeback. And I'm excited to have the opportunity to introduce our facilitator for this evening and for the evening. He's one of the premier voice in the nation. He's a keynote speaker, a bestselling author, a top performing trainer. He is Dr. Kinston J. Griffin. And he continues to push the boundaries of conformity. His award-winning presentations are renowned throughout the corporate, education, federal, and nonprofit spaces. He received his bachelor's degree from Livingston Stone College and a master's degree in just one year from the University of South Carolina. Dr. Griffin is the founder and CEO of Dream Builders Communication Incorporated, which provides training and development in the areas of leadership development, equity, diversity, and inclusion training, academic enhancement, and executive coaching. Please help me give a warm Cumberland County schools welcome, Dr. Kinston J. Griffin.
Everybody, how's everybody doing? Thank the two people that said fine, so we'll try that one more time. How's everybody doing? There we go. Much better, much better. So how was dinner? Was dinner pretty good? Was dinner good? I don't know if they can still hear you, but give them a round of applause for the dinner and the guy. So ladies, I want you to consider this. An unknown author once stated, "Never stop a task until it's done. Be your labors great or small, do it well, or don't even think about doing it at all." But why is this so critically important? Because in this journey that we have right now, we only have one minute. It's 60 seconds in it. It's forced upon you. You didn't seek it. You didn't choose it. But we've got to give it a count if we abuse it. We're brand new. We're brand new. We suffer and not here that we lose it. But it's only a tiny little bit. But our eternity is wrapped all over it. So do me a favor before I get started. Every single staff member, if you don't mind standing real quick. Dr. Black, make sure everybody's standing up. You check them. The queen is checking. So I think this is critically important. Because the closest thing that many of us have ever seen to a pandemic is maybe 1999. You remember why too? Oh yeah, you remember. But for the things that you, 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 goodness, you, 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 and you had to endure as leaders, thank you is not enough. You were working from eighth to fifth. You were trying to work with Lottie Dottie and everybody. You were trying to figure it out because no one had a clue. You were trying to put things in place, not only for children that had your last name, but for 89-plus schools of children that did not have your last name. So from a good old North Carolina story that really says, without a public school education, I would not stand here before you today. Please help me in giving this group of hardworking leaders a thunderous round of applause. Sit down because they're looking at you and they're not paying any attention. Sit down, sit down, sit down. And school board. I mean, you had the audacity, you and you, I think you're the newbie. This is speaker inappropriate. You had the audacity to run for board. And you, didn't you go to law school? You know better. And what were you thinking? Your grandma said, now baby, do the right thing. But here's a question. If not now, then when? If not you, then who? And if not the children of Cumberland County, then what? So why not you? So school board, there was chism in every single one of you. Man, this was tough. So I'll go speaker inappropriate for a second. This was crazy. Okay, you didn't hear me. This was crazy. I mean, you were in meetings like, some of you about to grow hair or lost hair in the meeting. You feel me? Yeah, we got the same haircut. This was different. There wasn't a roadmap. And then guess what? Some adults, no, maybe not in your, not in your district. But some adults wanted this to be like Burger King. They wanted to have it their way. And then they started to get bougie and wanted to be like Chick-fil-A. My pleasure, as long as it was pleasurable to them. It is amazing to all the things that you've experienced in this short period of time. But I'm telling you, by having the great comeback, I did not come here by way of Charlotte, by means of coming all the way from Texas last night to support my friend. And we came here to play games. This is about children now, like never ever before. And it's always been about children. But now it's about children like never ever before. Because when I looked at those analytics and I was looking, and thank you for doing a thorough job. Because I'll be honest with you. Can I be honest? We cross-referenced them with DPI before we got here. And you're spot on. So over the next day and a half, my goal is to engage you, to maybe stretch you, to maybe provide some practical tools and strategy, and allow you to challenge each other. So you have a sheet of paper right now, it's a white piece of paper. And I'm very excited because most of you all were not nosy. Notice I said both, so I didn't say all. You have a white sheet of paper right now on your piece of paper. Because my goal is also see if I can get you back on schedule. On the back of that piece of paper, write down what are you willing or what are you looking to gain from our time together? Now, don't write it big because you're going to have something else to write. But what are you looking to gain from this retreat? Write it down right now. What are you looking to gain from the retreat? What are you looking to gain from the retreat? What are you looking to gain from the retreat? What are you looking to gain from the retreat? What are you looking to gain? Love what Dr. Collins said. Refocus, restore, rejuvenate. Don't write that down though. That was it. The next question is, what are you willing to give? Because if you're going to gain something, you're going to have to give something. What are you willing to give? This is going to be important. What are you willing to gain? What are you willing to give? I also want to thank Mr. Whitley. I have been with him and, now he's not going to leave you. But I've been with him in three different school districts. And every district that he has been in, he has done an outstanding job for doing what's best for parents, doing what's best for students. So I am very, very appreciative. And when he told me, he said, "Well, Dr. Griffin..." Now I saw spoken, hold on, I'm going to see if I can do. Can I see your glasses? I'm going to do a five, six, if I can do that. Well, I think I'm going to go down to Cumberland County. I think me and my family are going to move in. I think it's going to be okay. I said, man, if you don't tell, pick up. I can't hear you on the phone. That's my guy. You have a jewel, Cumberland County. Make sure you maximize on people that you have that are good. These leaders right here are good. So what are you willing to give? What are you willing to gain? If you don't mind, do me a favor. If you mind reading what that quote says on the front. And you can use that mine. If you don't mind, read what that quote says. If you don't mind. If you thought this was going to be the presentation that you're going to sit and get, I'm the wrong one. You get ready to work. As a matter of fact, after he reads, since you knew we're not pledging, we're just putting you through the orientation process over again. So after you read, guess who has the back on it? You do. This is great. So what's the first one said?
Power of one, if there was some focus, it's formidable, but power of many working together at that point.
Working together is better. Unfortunately, before we met, I don't know what happened, okay? But yesterday ended last night. Whatever wasn't going great, we got to be better than good and better than most now. I don't know what happened. That's not my issue. But I believe that, and people say, well, you know, people are going to come here and get us motivated and we're going to feel good. No, we're going to follow up to make sure you do what you said you're going to do. So I'm putting you on notice now. This is not the last one. But some of you like, I can't wait for him to sit down. But guess what? I'm going to sit down tonight. I'm going to be back tomorrow and I'm not leaving after that. Because the problem is, we go to retreats and we get information, but we don't execute information and make it happen. Got to make this stuff happen. If you don't mind, read the purpose for us real quick, real quick. We got to be quick. Got to see if I can get us back on schedule.
To provide best practices to be in a highly effective board and team.
Highly effective board and team. Best practices, not the practices in Arizona, California, but your best practices. So right now, this is going to be great. What do you think two best practices should be for us to be more effective? Write them down right now. Now, you probably wonder, why do we have Mr. Wright's app? Because when you're sleeping tonight, my team is going to be working on this in the spreadsheet for us to reevaluate what you said that you've written. So just write it down. What do you think we can do to be more effective as a board, not a team? Write it, write it, write it, write it. Thank you so much. Also, I really want to thank Dr. Wilson Norman. I can tell you, she is very thorough. Most of the time, we do school board retreats and meetings. You can only have one phone call and people, you know, pretty much tell us kind of the framework, what we're walking into. I think we had 37 calls with Dr. Norman. I mean, I was like, what did you want to talk about now? It can't be that kind. She said, I just want to make sure. I just want to make sure. I appreciate her passion for excellence. The only time you're going to find success before work is in the dictionary. She's putting work in, that's why outcomes look the way they do. Are you willing to put the work in? So when you start talking about being highly effective, we want to talk about that. If you don't mind, if you don't mind, if you make sure we get this microphone, if you don't mind, because we gotta accept and make sure we have everything in place. Read what the vision, uh, is saying. Because if we're gonna make sure we understand where we were, we gotta make sure we know where we are. If you don't mind, read the vision and the mission.
Our vision, every student will have equitable access to engaging learning that prepares them to be collaborative, competitive, and successful in our global world. Our mission, Cumberland County schools will provide a safe, positive, and rigorous learning environment to prepare lifelong learners to reach their maximum potential.
Do me a favor, unless you have a flip phone, unless you have a flip phone, take a picture of that. If you got a flip phone, don't take a picture of it, because I don't want you to be embarrassed, okay? Don't, don't do it. Now, I'm not gonna say this, but Charles, Joe, Charles, Joe said you had a flip phone. I'm just, I'm just asking, just saying. Take a picture of that. Because it's amazing, we will have screenshots of children, we will have screenshots of families, but what I found out is sometimes we don't actually inspect what we expect, so therefore, we don't actually remember what we said we're gonna be. I'm a part of a group and it says, what they see is what they'll be. We've gotta make sure, if you're really gonna talk about collaboration, when it doesn't feel right, you gotta collaborate. If we're really gonna talk about being competitive, you gotta look at your, not the district next door, you gotta look at your data from last year and the year before and the analytics to see, what are we doing to recruit? What are we doing to retain? How are we putting ourselves in a position, this is gonna be good, to make sure we get good people and make sure we evaluate the seasoned and toxic ones? Oh, that was good right there. Let me tell you why it was good, because two people rolled their eyes and the two of you gave me like this. But if you're really gonna be competitive, we can no longer allow ourselves to have average circumstances. If you tell me six o'clock, you gotta be six o'clock. Because if you're really going to attract top-tier talent, top-tier talent can't walk in the door and see favoritism. As adults, it blows my mind, this is the funny part, as adults, many times, working with the little people is not the problem that, that, that our academic leaders have. It's working with the big people. This is what it looks like. You didn't speak to me this morning. I can't believe he did the announcements and forgot about the football team win. Oh my goodness, he thinks he the seventy-first. I can't wait, him every time. That is human behavior two point O. But what I found out is, you've got to always inspect what you expect and don't let your highs get too high, don't let your lows get too low, and be very cautious of what you allow to enter in, leaders. You have some colleagues on the board and in the district that are fired up and Dr. Collins, whatever you say, they're ready to go. And unfortunately, you all have some peers, no matter what you say, they all won't listen to you. Matter of fact, they didn't want you to be the chair. Ah, she, she needed a minute. Oh yeah. And what people have found out is, unfortunately, true transparent conversation is not popular, because yes, that exists, but how do we work the odds? That's what we're gonna work through, that's what we're gonna talk about. That's how we're gonna get through best practices. So I wanna find out who's really in the room. So flip your paper over, real quick, real quick. You will see these columns and rows, and rows go across and columns go down. In the row that goes across, you'll see the word animated, adventurous, analytical, or adaptable. Pick the one that best fits who you are at work or inside the school board meeting. Oh, this is gonna be good. At work or inside the school board meeting. Pick the one that best fits who you are. Do that number one through twenty. You gotta pick one. And you're probably saying, well, what if none of these fit me? Let me pick for you, because I was watching you eat at dinnertime. There's a difference between a person that picked cheesecake and a chocolate cake. When the young lady walked around, she said, well, can I give you some more sweet tea? Seven people said thank you. Six of you did not say anything. You probably wonder which one you are. You wanna know after the retreat, let me know. Not gonna tell you right now, because I gotta get, make sure we get this. Pick one in each row. Good, very good. One in each row. One in each row. Make sure you pick one in each row. Gotta pick one in each row. Also, the media and the great comeback team, everybody that's helping out with the electronics, thank you so much. It's amazing how we as adults have forgot to tell other adults thank you. I just saw David cheating on Kristen's paper, but I'm gonna just leave it right there. David, you my guy. I used to have wandering eyes too. Just chiseling a couple of your paper up. I see the district attorneys got wandering eyes. Just saying. Top and the bottom, top and the bottom, top and the bottom. If the bottom's tough, if you need somebody to pick for you, Nick said he has no problem in telling you how he really feels about you. Legally, he can back it up. Once you've completed the top, give me your total. Once you've completed the bottom, give me your total, then you'll get a grand total. About another minute. Great job, thank you sir, awesome. Very good. Make sure you do the top and the bottom, and give me the totals. For those that have finished, you'll see a little bit of information about green builders on the slide there. Also, for those that have finished, you can begin to look at the answer grid on the screen. If we prepare to review and align the vision, we have to make sure we really know who we are as team members. So if your highest column is A, I'd like for you to move from your seat and come and stand right here. Social distance, but stand right here in this area. I want you to be able to see the screen. If your highest column combined is B, I'd like for you to come and stand in this section. Combined. For those that, um, are not fully, are not finished, don't rush. You're just trying to move the process along. Great question. For those that have a C, you actually would normally sit, but today I want you to stand because you'd end up sitting in someone else's seat. So you can stand directly in the middle, right in this area. If you're a D, the letter D, you're going to stand in this section here. If you are a top, we call you a tweener. Or it could be something wrong with you, not joking, I'm joking, I'm joking. We want you to come and stand in this section, right here. So I have my As. As, raise your hand, you're over there, would be to my right, some of you all left. Bs, you are here, raise your hand, B. Awesome. Cs, you get to stand right here. Ds, you're there. My tweener, you are right here behind the microphone. Now, go ahead and look at the screen and go ahead and start judging each other. Go ahead and start judging each other. Because for boards to be effective, you've got to know the chemical DNA that you walk into the room with. So let's look at this A personality type. We're talking about behavior, not the person. This particular type is the A group. You can see the column. This is the A group. These are the people, and I know we're recording, but these are the people that have communion after five o'clock every day of the week. No, I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm joking. I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm joking, a lot, a lot.
He just came and picked it off. Give him six months.
Six months. So in six months. We don't need your assessment again. But look at the A personality. Now, I want to be clear, this is behavior, not persons. See, the reason it may look disorganized to you is it's all over the place, but that personality knows where everything is. You know somebody like that. Not punctual. They're not late. They're just walking through, speaking to everybody. Hey, good morning, good morning, good morning, good morning. They're not late, but at eight-thirty, they like this, trying to get everything together. Now, there's another personality that, 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 they got there at seven forty-five. And this is what happens. If they stop asking all these questions, we could get out on time. You don't say it out loud, but that's what you're thinking. Look at some of the qualities of this. Sociable, spirited, talkative, lively. When you're in board meetings and when you're starting to make decisions, if you have meetings over ninety minutes, not the beha-, not the person, but behavior, has undiagnosed attention deficit disorder type. They start getting the fidgeties. It look like a dance doctor, it look like they're doing the stanky leg, but it's not. They're ready to go. So when you're having meetings, you've gotta understand that healthy meetings in boards, they're proven, Gallup, two thousand seventeen, they're telling us that anything over two hours, just start thinking about it. This is not Kenzie Griffin, so don't judge the message. Because what happens is, we're seeing more emotion versus outcome-based strategies. And when you start giving outcome-based strategies, it's not my feeling, it's what the data show. If we're really gonna start talking about school choice, the data's already telling you what you gotta do. It might not be what you wanna do, but the data's telling you what you really kinda need to do. When you start talking about, uh, students that are coming from low social economic community, the data's told you that regardless of what color you are, they have a higher percentage of learning from teaching and learning from someone that looks like them. So a poor white child needs to sometimes see a poor, uh, see a white person. A poor African-American, a poor African-American child, needs to see an African-American. But guess what? It doesn't hurt if somebody is well out to see somebody that looks like them too. I point to you as leaders, you walk in a room, and we judge the room and go stand beside what we feel comfortable. And sometimes it's not cultural. It can sometimes be haircuts. Look at the B personality. Frank, workaholic, impatience, tactless. Here's, watch this, the Bs are getting ready to feel everything I'm getting ready to say, and I gotta get out of your hair. Bs, you have a low tolerance for lazy people. You have a low tolerance for lying, conniving. We're supposed to be here for children. And we sitting here talking about, oh my goodness, well, seventy-first, and my EE snip, well, and you sitting here, and you wanna come, but you know it's too close to come. And you know you on TV. You know you on TV. And then Bs, you trying to fix your face. Your mama told you, watch your face. She know your mama told you. Watch your face, watch your face. And you sitting here like, oh, they got one more time. And you just trying to hold it together. It's not bad, but understand, Kenny Rogers said it best, some days you gotta know when to hold it. Some days you gotta know when to hold. And here's the worst part, some days you right, but some days you gotta walk away and some days you gotta run. Hear me. Somebody else's poor planning never should make your life an emergency. Don't let poor planning make your life an emergency, because what will happen, ulcers don't come from what you eat. Sometimes they come from food you allowed to eat you. Be careful. These jobs will take you out. And the grass is not green on the other side, and if it is, the water bill is higher. Be careful. Watch this. Please first perform. Thank you for being here. I've already read the agenda. You know, we're a little behind. Be patient with this group, because we started on it. As we look at the data and analytics of what it is, let's make sure we look at the real practices and keep this group honest and balanced. As we're looking at honesty and balance, let's let the facts show what the facts show. I highly encourage you to speak in and speak up when you see something that's unethical, not right, and if you don't feel comfortable, send a text message to one of them. They have no problem with that. But I think it's critically important that your voice has to be in the room, because look at this. Eighty percent of the time, research shows that you're right. You just gotta figure out how to say it. But you also remind me of that great author, Popeye the Sailor. Popeye got beat up in twenty-seven minutes of the thirty-minute cartoon. And then he got so upset, he popped the spinach out of his chest and beat the wheels off of Bluto. Don't wait until the- Don't wait until the twenty-seven minutes to let the wheel be beaten off of somebody. Every now and then, cut people like one of my good friends did in one of my favorite books, and he cut somebody's ear. You can cut people, it is okay, okay? I'm gonna come back to you. I know we're a little behind, but I'm gonna do my part to get us on schedule, okay? Be patient, relax, but most of all, I need your voice. Your voice is important. Bs, hi, how are you? Wonderful to meet you, golly, holy cow. Look right here, peaceful child diplomatic. You guys are the best listeners on the planet. Sometimes you just don't help people solve their problems, but you good listener. This is, this is what you do, it's like Southern nights, watch this. Bless your heart. Anybody not from the South, raise your hand real quick. Okay. If you hear the word bless your heart, it's not a compliment. I'm sure you're aware of that, okay? Um, right here, these are my tweeners, what were you tied between?
Lying and a owl.
Lying and an owl, you know what that means? That you normally are pretty patient, but once they hit that nerve, oh yeah, you can go in. You pray, you can go in. No, but you will cuss later, I mean, it's just whatever it is. So what's your number? B and C, there's something wrong with you too, what's the? Adopted, oh, you got kids? Aw, man, adopted a fat, hey, he's sweet, but guess what, he not a law, so watch him, okay, watch him. Here's the whole thing. As you're starting to make decisions, look around the room. I said, look around the room. Look around the room. Because sometimes we base many of our decisions based off of the analytics. This is similar to Myers-Briggs, the FSA, we just did it in a quick, fun manner, but look at who's in the room. So many times, I gotta have your voice, because you're my conscious. But I need your energy, because you're my execution. But I need your engagement, because we're gonna be long with the two hours in most board meetings. So every ninety, you gotta figure it out. And then when somebody has gotten on somebody's nerve, you just gotta go through and do one of these. You do. Because for some people, you have walked out of school board meeting and your feelings have been hurt, teach Kingston. Your feelings have been hurt. You're trying to do the best, ooh, I almost said the word, I know we on TV, doggone thing. You're trying to do the best thing towards children, for communities, you don't represent, what did I say, District Six and District, you don't represent just that district. You represent every child in Cumberland County. Everyone. The ones that can rap but can't read. The ones that's gonna make it to the NBA, they will have no bank account, because they won't listen in math class. The ones that's gonna have an NBA, a mega bank account. The ones that unfortunately are going through and bullying people on the internet and come to school and they're hurting, and they're a part of the NFS, no friends left. These are things that we're seeing now in schools. And I'm not saying these are our problems, but at some point in time, adults, we gotta get it right. So why not this weekend? I, like I said, I don't care the stuff that happened years past, years ago. Sometimes I gotta put what I want aside and put what we gotta get in the inside. I was talking to Dr. Russell, I said, I said, now based on the things I'm reading here, I'll show you, I've been cheating, and what I mean by I've been cheating, I'll show you. I pulled school board minutes, meetings, oh yeah, I've been cheating. You talked about the next steps, September the fourteenth, then you had something in August, then you talked about the open item. Um, you talked about code twenty-three hundred, you talked about all this stuff. You shouldn't have hired us if you didn't wanna have accountability in place. Because now, all I'm looking at is what you said by the vote of aye. So if we gonna aye, we gonna walk out within check. If we gonna aye, we gonna be in it together. If we gonna aye, we may fall out in here, but we can't fall out out there. My daddy used to tell me, I bet you know my daddy, what happens in this house? See, I knew we related, I knew, I knew he was my first cousin on my grandma's nephew's side. So take a seat, take a seat, because I gotta get you back on the schedule. So as you begin to look at this, take a picture, because some of you not gonna buy my book, so take a picture. Take a picture. It's in the book, but take a picture. Take a picture. So as we go through this process, when we start talking about the policy of thirty-six forty, when we start talking about thirty-six twenty, I'm gonna be engaged, but I need you to be just as engaged as you are with me as you are when we start talking about, oh, what's going on with the graduation, uh, requirement. My goal is to facilitate and engage. I may ask a question not out of disrespect, I ask the question to gain insight, because all of this is great, and all of these pages that my staff had had me read over the last twenty-five days is great, but I wanna have the logic and the science behind the question. So if we're gonna talk about graduations, because that's coming up, I'm teeing you up, we're gonna talk about the graduation requirements. The staff have done the analytics, they just want you to be aware of what's best for the district as a whole. As we begin, just now, after we talk about that, we've gotta talk about, um, what's gonna take place on the academic achievement side. And then we gotta talk about student activities. And you're wondering, well, what's my homework? Remember I told y'all, I'm gonna get you ahead of schedule? Your homework's on the back of this sheet. So now, on the back of that sheet, you need to bring that sheet back tomorrow. People are saying, well, how are you going to do it tonight, and if you gonna bring, if we want us to bring the sheet back tomorrow? While they're talking, I'm gonna take pictures and send it to my staff. Then they're gonna put, you're kinda like, they gotta work on Friday night? Yeah, they gotta work on Friday, I'm working on Friday night. If you're gonna be great, you can be average. So everybody do me a favor, hold your hands up, this is gonna be good. Hold up. This is good, this is good. Hold up. Now shake. We can all say we shaking hands together. Bring Dr. Black up, Dr. Black, give her a round of applause, she comes up. Get her a different mic, get her a different mic. Leave your paper, so I don't disrupt the presentations after me. Flip your paper back over, so I can just go through and do some quick clicks, okay? Thank you.
I think this was strategic to say every following year.
I'm gonna say it in the class.
Well, good evening everyone.
Good evening.
Well, I have some partners with me tonight. I have, uh, Mr. Underdo, and I have Mr. Myron Williams, and I have Ms. Gretchen Walker. And all of those have a part in what we're going to be talking about in terms of this overview. Let me have our pictures. Okay, thank you. As we, uh, continue a process of conducting a feasibility study on the graduation requirements uh, as it relates to the state's minimum requirements of, the right one slide. Of, um, twenty-two credits versus our LEA requirements of twenty-eight credits. We want to try to give you an overview and update you as to what we've been doing for the past few weeks in terms of trying to gather information. So it is not to make any type of a recommendation tonight, but we need to let you know that we didn't forget the request, and we're working on components of this study, we wanna share with you what we have come up with at this point, alright? We have, uh, as a part of this study, we have a district team, we have high school representatives, we have lead counselors and program leaders who have already provided feedback to us at this point. We, uh, pose our questions in terms of three buckets. We have them talk about the pros and cons of utilizing twenty-two credits instead of twenty-eight. We have them to give us feedback on if not twenty-two, then is there another number of credits less than twenty-eight that we might want to consider? And the third area that we concentrate on in terms of having them give us feedback is other thoughts on how to support all students. Once we have those questions as our framework, then of course, here are our actions. In our first session, when we met with our groups, we examined our policies, large and regional district data. We looked at and explored the benefits and impact to students, districts, and programs. That's in our first session. The second session consisted of school representatives. And in that particular session, we had principals, counselors, and district personnel to provide feedback for us. Also, we conducted a survey of our counselors and all high school principals, and we compiled their feedback. And in session three, this is where we are tonight, we will be soliciting feedback from the board in terms of having you to jot down some thoughts as a result of hearing the overview that we are gonna provide for you. And you will put those on index cards, and we'll collect them and make them as a part of our study. So that's where we are. Next slide. As you know, our current graduation requirements are twenty-eight CCS credits. That's what Cumberland Schools requires, twenty-eight. But for the state's minimum standards, we have twenty-two credits. Now, six of the additionally electives that we have in Cumberland Schools are courses, and it can be any course in ter- as long as they are elected, uh, classes. And those six plus the twenty-two gives us the twenty-eight that we have as our minimum requirement standard. Alright, next slide. Ron, I'd like you to come up now and talk about the information and the data that you have compiled in terms of what's happening on the regional level, they require credits, large districts also require credits, and the districts who have alternative pathways, which is we have one here in Cumberland, and that is the DDP.
On the, on the chart, you will see different districts. I reached out to the regional districts. In Cumberland County, the testing region, we're in the southeast region five, which is Cumberland, Robinson, all the way to the coast. And so I reached out to the ones around, as you can see, Blayden, Clinton City, um, Hoke, Johnston, Robinson, and Sampson all have twenty-eight required, uh, credits. Moore has twenty-two, and Harnett has twenty-six. And then the group that I work with very closely each week, I reached out to the large districts. As of when we reported this, and it has changed, Wake has twenty-six, that chart will be updated. Charlotte, I reached out to them again this week to make sure they have not changed, because they were looking at this as well. But the last I heard, Charlotte was at twenty-eight, Durham is at twenty-eight, Forsyth is at twenty-two, Gaston is at twenty-eight, Guilford has twenty-two and twenty-eight. Students who are doing twenty-two have to be on a seven-period day. Students who are twenty-eight are on a four-by-four, which I think Mr. Underdo and Mr. Williams will speak to in a little while. Johnston, New Hanover, Union are all at twenty-eight. And then I looked in all of them, um, that we looked at have a, a district with an alternative pathway where students do have an opportunity to be able to graduate with less than twenty-eight, if it's an approved plan. So that's what we have from the feedback, because I know you always want to know, how do others do it?
Absolutely. Thank you, Ron. Alright, and you wanna talk about the four-year graduation rate, are you up to? That's our next slide. Oh, the presentation is in your book, Dr. Kind, remind me, I forgot to share that with you.
As we're talking about the graduation rate, I thought I needed to show you graphically what we have. If you'd have gone back probably fifteen years ago, we were above the county average, above the state average, and then we, we were even with the state, and then the state started going ahead of us. And a lot of times, the discussion will be because so many different counties across the state are, are allowing twenty-two credits as opposed to our twenty-eight credits. But I wanted you to see the last five years, we are in the orange in Cumberland County, the state average is in the blue. You can see back in, um, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, Cumberland County was a, a point, four-point-four below the state. Then it was a point four-three below the state, then point two-seven, then point three-oh, and now it's point two-seven again. So we're closing that a little bit, um, with what we have, but what I want you to focus on is nineteen-twenty and twenty-twenty-one. Those two years, we were allowed by the state of North Carolina to let students have twenty-two credits to graduate. And I think a lot of people believe if we would go from twenty-two, from twenty-eight to twenty-two, that we would see the, the scores, our averages go up, or the, um, graduation rate would go up tremendously, and that just has not happened. So the, what we need to look at is whichever model we use, to make sure we focus out on the right students who need to be addressed to be able to get out, whether it's at twenty-eight or twenty-two with the credits required. But we thought, before we went any further, I'll let you show you where we are as a district compared to the state with our graduation rate.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. And our next slide. Now here are some of the comments and feedback that we received from various groups that we've met with up to this point. Some of the pros and the cons. We asked them to think in terms of, of, you know, what are the positives for twenty-eight credit, twenty-two credits instead of the twenty-eight, and what are some of the cons? And this is what we, uh, uh, they provided for us. Some of the pros are, well, you have timely high school graduation. You have decreased high school dropout rate, some of the pros. Scheduling flexibility. It addresses the needs of struggling students. There's an allotment flexibility, at least in second semester. Increased participation in high school connections courses, and flexibility to take more advancement courses. And some of the negatives or the cons for this are overall air, average day of membership impact. Students not taking advantage of all of the learning. Options such as college career promise, the arts, and CTE. Ensuring a full continuum of support for all learners. And of course, difficulty managing parent concerns about wanting to graduate early and making them come back for no reason. Then we said, alright, think about twenty-two credit. If not twenty-two credits, is there another, another number lower than twenty-eight that could be proposed? Overall, probably the information that came back were twenty-six credits requires finishing the fall semester. Cons, the same challenges exist with any number above the twenty-two does not appear to be an advantage to numbers between twenty-two and twenty-eight. And I've asked my colleagues to come tonight, because I wanted them to share some of their thoughts in terms of what is happening at their building level, since they are working with these students on a daily basis. They have knowledge that perhaps we don't have. And so I think it's always good for us to have people who are right in the trenches to come and talk about what they see as some of the pros of twenty-two credits versus the twenty-eight or vice versa. So I'll ask Mr. Myron Williams to come and share some of his thoughts with us. And we're capturing this information and making this a part of our study. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Good evening everyone. My point of view might differ a little. If Cumberland County's gonna consider dropping from twenty-eight credits to twenty-two credits, and I'm glad Ron mentioned what some of the counties are doing, you need to look at doing a hybrid schedule or a year-long schedule. Um, I think it would be disastrous to do twenty-two credits and attempt to stay four-by-four. Um, it'd affect a lot of things. Um, ADM for one. Um, and ADM, ADM affects a whole lot of things that Ron could, could, could talk about. It, it, it'd affect the structure of our teachers. You, you'll lose CT, we'll have to drop CT teachers and add core teachers. It's doable, but I believe when you focus on what are you gonna look at, if you're gonna drop from twenty-eight to twenty-two, you really clearly gotta define, define what your goal's gonna be. It can't simply be that we're gonna get stu- students out quicker. Because that's not the focus, is how we're gonna get them out, how prepared will they be when they leave. Drop from twenty-eight to twenty-two does not build a better citizen for our future, if you don't consider the schedule. Uh, twenty-two, seven credits, as he mentioned some other counties are doing. Um, it gives us a better, our hybrid schedule, which is a combination of four-by-four and year-long, which is easy to do with our high school schedules. Um, is a benefit for every kid that's in a building. Those students that take a little bit longer to learn, we can make it work for them. Those students that are above average and better, that can work, run on that fast pace of the four-by-four, we can do it for them too. And we don't have to change the structure of what we have in our building as well. That's all. What I advise of you is clearly define what it is that you really want to accomplish, and it can't be just to get a child out faster. Um, it's a better prepared, um, for me, a better prepared child. And, and consider, and I wrote it down in my book back there, consider allowing us to do a hybrid schedule, whether you stay tw- whether we stay twenty-eight or go twenty-two. Because we can make that happen with the personnel we have right now.
And Myron, Mr. Williams, you say hybrid, some students, uh, seven-period day, and some, blah.
Well, what I would look at when I hybrid, I look at core courses. I would have a year-long algebra one, it's one semester algebra one. Year-long English, and, and you would pair, for instance, if you have an, uh, an, a math one would be paired with world history. Any child, a child would have to take at least two, uh, year-long classes or two semester classes to make it balance. Kinda hard to explain, but I built one before, and it, and it works very well.
I thank you, Mr. Williams. I told him prior to comment tonight that he had three minutes. And I wanted him to say it, so he did well. So thank you, Mr. Williams, I appreciate you, alright? Mr. Underdo, same thing goes for you. In terms of the three minutes.
If it's good and bad, there you go.
I'm in trouble because I thought you said 30 minutes itself.
We're in trouble, so let me stay on script here. Good evening, everyone. I like what Principal Williams stated earlier. When I think about the block schedule versus this seven-period day, um, a whole new set of issues arise. And the first thing that I start to think about is three things that you love to talk about. Money, money, money. Uh, one being you need more teachers on a seven-period day schedule. We already have a significant shortage of teachers. So where are we going to get these additional teachers? Um, with the block schedule, schools are able to provide more classes as well with less teachers. And so what would that look like on the seven-day, um, schedule? So you're looking at huge savings if we continue with the huge, with the, uh, huge savings if we continue with the district's block schedule. Looking at some of the pros, the 28 diploma credit hours is excellent for college-bound students and lends itself to basically customizing a student's high school academic track to accommodate students with multiple career interests, uh, where they have the possibility to earn more than just one credential in addition to the state's required 22 foundational graduation credits. Under the 28 credits, the college and career promise becomes more meaningful and beneficial to students seeking either CTE certifications or college transfer pathways. What I also love about the 28 graduation credit hours is that they lend themselves to our students being more competitive to attend Ivy League schools, which is really the benchmark when we look at it. Um, especially for our AIG and highest achieving students in the district. Ivy League schools want to see students who have consistently challenged themselves throughout high school by, um, taking progressively more advanced courses such as advanced placement classes as well as dual enrollment classes while earning high grades. I'm almost finished. Walking up on me. That lion in you, that lion, all right. For example, many Ivy League colleges and universities want to see students take a full four years of foreign language, um, math, science, et cetera. So the potential college tuition savings would be astronomical for those students because they would be earning college credit for higher-level classes. And let me add, the scholarship offerings would be substantial. And lastly, see, I'm cutting it, I'm cutting it big time. Um, I see the need for a basic academic track as well, requiring only 22 credit hours to graduate as compared to 28, um, credit hours for students who may have significant difficulties when it comes to academics or social-emotional, um, issues, who may want to finish high school early to enter either the military or immediately into the workforce because some students are late bloomers. They may not see the need of taking the full 28 credits to graduate. They need to quickly graduate, and then as they enter the workforce or the military, they start to understand and realize that, hey, I need to get more education in order to advance my career as well as to have a better life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amadou. Thank you for being immediate. So those are two voices from the field. They're in the trenches every day, and they see things that perhaps we don't see. And so that's why I think it's important for us to get feedback from them and add this as a part of our research study as we move along. So at this time, you should have some index cards or something near your bag there. Based on what you've heard, board members, what thoughts jumps out at you at this point? And we'll come back later on and address these. So if you don't have any cards, you can use something from this. Oh, they do have it? Okay. All right, they have a notepad. So place it on a notepad, and then Ms. Musso White and Mr. Reyes, I got you doing my clicker there, Ron Phillips. We'll collect the cards. So just jot down a quick thought of what has jumped out at you at this point that after you've heard this, you know, what thoughts come to your mind right now? That you feel like it might need further exploration with us? You can do pros and cons, yes. And Mr. Phillips and Ms. Musso White, probably we won't take them right now because we still have to talk about the DDP, and it might be something in that area they would want to add. And so I'll give them a couple more minutes, and after we do the sixth, next part. This, uh, Dr. Wilson Norman, we'll wrap it up soon. You're good? Okay. Pros and cons of utilizing 22 credits instead of the 28. If not 22, is there another number that you think we might need to consider? I would not ask you to put your names on them unless you choose to do so. Not really wanting to rush you, but we will go on to the next segment, and you can just keep those notes right there in case you want to continue to jot down some more thoughts as you process information. At this point, I want to talk, we want to talk a little bit about, uh, the differentiated diploma pathway. As you know, uh, board members, you gave us the authorization to utilize 22 credits with Algeby Wilkins High School, and so that's a given. Also during the pandemic year last year, you gave us an offer, the opportunity to use the 22 credits if necessary with our students, our seniors, because they have experienced all kinds of dynamics that impacted their academic achievement. And so we had that in place as a waiver for last year. So I'm going to ask Ms. Gretchen Walker, who is one of our lead counselors, premier counselors, professional student counselor from E. Smith High School.
No pressure.
Talk about, you know, the differentiated, uh, pathway, because she works with this on a daily basis. And this is for those students who have especially challenging or at-risk type situations. Life has gotten in the way, and so they needed an opportunity to be able to graduate with a high school diploma, or we might have faced the possibility of their dropping out of high school. So Gretchen?
Good evening, everyone. You go to the next slide. So as Dr. Black mentioned earlier, the Cumberland County Board of Education had implemented the differentiated diploma pathway as a provision to allow certain students to graduate with a full diploma while meeting state requirements and waiving the local requirements. So I think Mr. Underdo mentioned earlier that we do have a couple of kids who have some social-emotional needs, and they need to get out of high school quicker. So this plan was put into place to allow students to not drop out, but to meet their full potential by still graduating with a full high school diploma. Next slide. So what are some of the benefits of this program? Again, they still meet North Carolina graduation requirements. They get a full diploma, so it's not like it's an abbreviated diploma or anything different like that. And it allows students to actually finish with their cohort. Some challenges that may arise, um, some of my colleagues mentioned that some of the paperwork to do this program is very tedious. There's a lot of papers that have to be signed. We have to get parents to come into the building. Um, there's a meeting that has to occur, so it can be intimidating at times. Again, a stigma around the process. I'm not familiar with any stigmas associated with it other than people being misinformed about what the DDP actually is. But again, it is a full diploma. We petitioned Dr. Black's office and asked for permission to allow students to graduate with less than 28 credits. The people who were involved in this process, obviously we have to get the students on board, the family members, their parents. The high school principal has to sign off on that form, and there has to be a team meeting with all the stakeholders involved. Next slide. So I do want to just point out that last year, Dr. Black approved 132 DDPs. I've had the opportunity to survey some of my colleagues across the county, and the numbers this year are going to range between eight and 300. So we do need this program because students are still feeling the effects of COVID, and we want to keep our graduation rates up. So I do want to pause there and see if there are any questions about the differentiated diploma pathway that I can answer for anyone. Okay, seeing that there are none.
Dr. Conley, the question that you asked me about military kids coming into the district, can they have opportunities for the DDPs?
Yes.
And the answer is yes.
And Dr. Conley, I, I also mentioned that we do follow the Military Child Compact Law here. So a lot of times we do survey students' transcripts from other states and still allow them to graduate on time. All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Give them a round of applause for my three. Wonderful, y'all did quite well. That's, he said, that's his counselor from E. Smith High School. All right, so you might want to add some thoughts about that, you know, if they have come up in your mind at this point. I want to, before we leave this whole portion of the presentation, key questions that we believe are relevant in terms of trying to compile information with this feasibility, uh, study. Number one is, how this may impact us economically? That's one of the considerations. Another question is, what are some of the technical aspects of this consideration? Of this process? How may this impact us from a legal status, Mr. Soroka? When we talk about these credits? And finally, what are some of the scheduling considerations that will be needed for us to consider as we try to formulate information so that we can bring a viable recommendation to board members that would be accepted? And we need to do a lot more work. We are by no means at a point, as I said at outset, where we are ready to make a recommendation. But we felt like it was important for us to give you an overview as to what we have done at this point so that you would know that this is on the forefront of our thinking. It is very important, and it is a decision that cannot be taken lightly. That's why we're going to have the necessary research at hand to support any decision or recommendation that we'll, we will be making. Are there any other questions?
You just stated that, uh, you have to complete additional activities before you're ready to come into the board. My suggestion would be to involve toward any step of the process, not wait until again, we'll say something, up or down, up.
Right.
Not having the capability to know what they're doing on the project.
Yes, sir. All right, and we would be happy to do so. We still have other stakeholder groups that we want to bring into this conversation as well.
Uh, we're going to do this tonight, but I'd like to know the background of when the state made the 22, or how long was the state getting 22? Because it was only till recently that I even knew we were, you know, that far away from where the state was and how some of the districts are so far above the state average. And so the kind of the history of how we got where we are would be interesting to know later. I don't have to know it now.
All right. Thank you, we certainly will. Any other thoughts or questions that you need to raise before we go to our next segment? If not, we do appreciate your attention tonight, and Ms. Musso White and Mr. Phillips will gather your notes. Oh, you have another question? I'm sorry, Mr. McHale, I didn't see you. Come here.
How are we involved in this process?
That's another stakeholder group that we will involve in there. No, sir, not at this point. The only ones that I showed on the screen are the ones that we have involved at this point. But we do certainly want to do that.
Good evening. Mr. Colberth is going to do our presentation on extracurricular activities and student organizations. We just want to recap that earlier this school year, we were able to waive the 2.0 rule for the fall. And it was discussed that we bring it back to the retreat to look further as to whether or not this 2.0 local decision room for extracurricular activities and student organizations should be waived, um, for a longer period of time. And tonight, we just wanted to bring you back some information on the impact of the 2.0 rule. So as we begin to prepare a recommendation for later, that you have deeper information about how this is impacting our students. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Colberth to, um, provide an overview.
Thank you, Dr. Stacy Wilson Norman. Uh, my portion is, as we revisit this, this local, uh, rule is, and, and to remind you that it's a 2.0 rule, a 70 average rule on all the classes, and also an attendance piece where students can't miss more than 54 periods in a semester. But before we, uh, even talk about the local rules, uh, one thing that I wanted to do was explain eligibility. I always equate it to reading Leviticus in the Bible. It can get, uh, uh, tough sometimes with, with the language. But there is a scholastic portion of eligibility, and that's what we will be looking at. There's other areas, residency, uh, numbers of semesters and age. But we're only going to look at the scholastic portion. And the first thing that I want everyone to know is who's making the rules. For high school athletics, it's the high school, North Carolina High School Athletic Association. And then for middle school sports, it's the Department of Public Instruction. And again, the Board of Education in Cumberland County set local rules that we're here to discuss. But let's look at those state requirements that some of you have asked me about as recently as this week. Uh, first, uh, for high school student athletes, they have to pass three out of four classes for the semester. At the middle school level, middle school students have to pass four out of six classes, and they cannot fail more than one core subject. They cannot fail more than one core class, which, uh, we're familiar with those core classes. In both, uh, high school and middle school, a student always has to be promoted. And as a high school principal, um, and as a high school AD, I always kept these numbers right here, and I would write them down for student athletes all the time, six, 13, and 20. You got to have six credits to be a sophomore, 13 credits to be a junior, and 20 credits to be a senior. And you must always pass English. So those were numbers that I always made sure, uh, our kids knew. So these are the state requirements. And then there's some, some, some other rules that I think are pertinent that we should, we should talk about. Uh, non-traditional courses. Uh, for athletic eligibility, audit courses don't count. So if you get a pass/fail grade, can't be counted for eligibility. And then the second thing, uh, homeschool students, uh, they can participate, but they have to be enrolled at our schools in at least two classes. And for a homeschool student, they have to pass all of the classes that they're taking at our high schools. And then not every class counts towards eligibility. We do have some classes in our curriculum, office assistant, library assistant. These do not count towards eligibility. And then finally, there is a rule that once you are ineligible on the first day of the semester, you cannot become eligible during that semester unless there is some type of hardship or you have an incomplete and you're waiting on a grade to be finalized, or you're waiting on a score, uh, from the state such as an EOC score. Next slide, please. I thought it would be important for you to know what sports we're offering here in Cumberland County and by what season. Listed in the fall are our sports. If you see a C, that is a co-ed, meaning there's a men's and women's team. If you see a W, that is strictly a women's sport. If you see a M, it's strictly a man's sport. And if you don't see, uh, a coding, that means- that means men and women can participate in that sport. Next slide, please. It's important to remember that eligibility is checked at the beginning of both semesters. So fall sports are checked one time at the beginning of the fall semester, but we use spring data to determine eligibility in the fall, and that's important. You have to know what sport a child is participating in because the data that's going to be used is from the previous semester. Winter sports are a special condition because they start in the fall and they end in the spring. So winter student athletes actually have their eligibility checked twice. And then, of course, in the spring, our spring sports, we're using fall data. Next slide, please. Again, as we revisit our policy, we want to keep these questions in mind. What is the impact of our current policy, our current local policies that we waive? And then, can we design a policy or make some practice that includes all? As we previously looked at data, we saw that our current policy was excluding kids from athletics and band. And not only were these kids being excluded, these were kids that were meeting the minimum load at the state level. And that minimum load word, that is what we call meeting the state requirement. So we also learned from looking at our local policy that our 2.0 was not a cumulative GPA. It was from the previous semester. And one of our examples that stood out, we had a student that had a 3.2 GPA average that had a bad semester in the spring. And that student was actually deemed ineligible for athletics in Cumberland County even though that student had met the state requirements. And I think that caught all of our attention as we looked at that. He met the minimum load. Some might say that this is a problem with our current policy. Let's consider just a couple of things. Research is overwhelmingly clear that a connected student, and that's a student that is involved in some type of after-school program, a connected student does better in school than a student that is not connected to their school. Research also shows that a student that participates in interscholastic activities outperforms students that do not. So if we are to believe the research, why would we want to exclude students from these situations or from these learning environments? Again, research is clear. These types of environments are beneficial towards a student's academic success. That's something we want to include the student in, not exclude. My father used to have a rule, no grades, no ball. All of us here are familiar with this type of mentality and support it. However, some of our kids today, they don't have that kind of support structure at home. They need mentoring, support systems, and the social structures that our after-school programs provide. You will be hard-pressed to find any coach or band director that thinks athletics or the arts are more important than academics. Most understand and see their programs as additional means to develop the whole child. And don't forget, we're talking about kids that got excluded yet. They were eligible by state regulations. But we don't want to stop talking about all kids needing this environment. They go hand in hand with the total development of the child. In closing, let's ponder some questions. Is our local policy, one that we've created, inclusive? Is it allowing kids access to positive environments? How do we have and maintain a strong academic focus? And how do we develop the whole child while not letting go of the concept of no grades, no ball? Let's look at some options. Next slide. Option one would be simply keep what we currently have in place. Go back to what we had in place and require a 2.0 from the previous semester. And I refer to that as the no grades, no ball option. Option one would be to accept the state requirements as is. Let schools do their job in teaching the standards and providing the academic support that we know all kids need. We let the kids participate if they've done what the state says, that they've met minimum load, and we get them connected to the school, which only will help and not hurt. And then, because I think we always need more options, I came up with a third option. I've been looking at this with individuals. And this third option is, what if we said anyone that meets state requirements are eligible? They can try out for the team. If they make the team, they're on the team. Take it a step further. What if this student, eligible from state requirements, doesn't have a 2.0? Doesn't have a 70 average? Or maybe from the previous semester, they missed more than 54 periods? We could declare them as being inactive. We could place them on inactive status. Inactive status students are declared not eligible to play in the games or the contests. So in this situation, a student that's eligible by state requirements would be allowed to try out for the team and be allowed to make the team. But if they didn't have that 2.0 that we've had in place or they didn't have that 70 average, we could declare them inactive. Inactive status could then be removed by saying to the child in two and a half, four and a half week increments, if you have the 2.0 in your classes or you have the 70 average in your classes, you could then become eligible to play in the scrimmages, games, contests. And the thing about this is, when you look at it, it's really both policies in effect. There are some pluses. The kid gets to be a part of something positive. They're involved in after-school programs. The negative is, a student standing on the sideline, not able to play. His peers knowing that, okay, well, they're not able to play because there's a grade problem. And that's got a negative connotation to it somewhat. But that's better than sending a kid home to the neighborhood and taking them away from something that I think research clearly shows is beneficial to them. So there's really three options. I've tried to explain eligibility. And now I'm going to ask you if you have any questions concerning any of this information. Mr. Water?
Are there any other districts that are being licensed that are?
No, sir, none that I'm aware of. A lot of school districts simply go with the state regulations. Some have an attendance policy that's very similar to what we have. Some do it on a case-by-case basis, which I think is, from my experience, has been difficult. You want to be consistent in these matters. And... Yes, sir.
Now, so when you're looking at national data or state data, but we have data that's common practice to sit and tell us how they do 2.0 and the impact that that has on a student and for your graduation rate. Heard not having that, participating in sports or not participating. I want to know how we have come about making these judgments based on data, or just based on something that feels good.
The part about participating in athletics, is that the question?
Now, what I'm asking you is, we're looking at making decisions about 2.0. But do we have Cumberland County school data? Do we have Cumberland County school data that tells us the difference in the success of a child, a student, that has a 2.0 versus one that does not have a 2.0, that participates in sports or not participates in sports?
We... Yes, sir.
I was saying, that rule's been in place a long way. Having that or having two dots, it's a rule that's been in place a long way.
But so we've never measured?
Well, I guess it's a rule that's in place and we can't have the alternative.
You can still measure data, that's the problem. You can see the success rate, it doesn't mean that you can't do that.
What I'm saying, Mr. Taylor, is that the policy, this policy has been in place that with those students who are eligible to play that with a 2.0, that would be able to compare to groups that they're in. Or the students that could play with those who had the 2.0. So if you don't have that for the ones that didn't have the 2.0, that wasn't even able to play.
No, but they may not have been able to play. But you could miss their success, even the graduation rate in high school.
Uh-oh.
See what I'm saying?
Whether or not the graduate or didn't-
Right, right, that's it.
Yeah, that's a national difference, and I'll go through that. Really, that's a difference, that's a difference, that's a difference.
Yeah, and I mean, we need to. We have to make some decisions, we really need to make that happen, okay? Or we need to have some supporting data to support our decision when we're thinking of it.
What's the top line for decision?
Well, currently, right now, we said we'd waive the 2.0 and the 70 average for the fall. The next time eligibility will be checked, we'll be coming right back from Christmas when the second semester starts.
I just wanted to say, I'm intrigued by this new idea that supporters come up with. The idea behind the 2.0 is to incentivize a better grade performance and allowing them to try out and take them out of that environment. Also, this is important for us in classes. Like, also surrounding the family and people that are also looking at it, trying to get eligible to help them compete. So I think if there's some way that we could do a little research, get that, get something like that going, I think it would still be the goal behind 2.0 environment, but also hopefully give them a sports support. What's your question?
It's, if you told, you know, children that are hard to do better than children that aren't. And I don't have the data in front of me, but I've watched so many children participate in the arts programs and know they can fall more than likely. I need to prove it, because I don't have that. But I knew those children were more successful because they were accountable to me or to my husband. And we wish them to do better. So we know children who are part of organized sports. And that data, we do have nationally. I mean, if you probably have that also. But there's just no doubt that when they feel the part and they have a mentor and can move them forward, they're going to do better.
I agree.
After state, I'll just add, my final thought on this is the counterargument I've heard the whole time we discussed this over many years when it comes up, is the fallacy that as kids that are struggling, when you take away extracurricular activities or sports, almost sudden start studying or you become better academic students because you took that away from them. That's a fallacy that I've heard that we just need to put to bed going forward, so. Thank you.
Great conversation, great discussion. And the thing that I think is most critical, and I see boards struggle with this, and it was funny that Dr. Conley said it, and I was like, hmm. How am I going to insert this? And he said what I was thinking. In a retreat, it is designed for you to give feedback as you're doing so the staff can then hear your feedback, use data, and then come back with multiple options of decisions for you to do what's best for children. So as we prepare to come back tomorrow, and I'm not sure who it might be, but it might not be a bad idea in your thoughts is just to have sticky pads or whatever it may be and continue to write your thoughts because there are some you have no problem in speaking. Remember the different personalities? The P is never going to have a problem in speaking. But the C, you may be processing. And there's nothing wrong with the processing. But we still need the processor so we can then process after this is completed. Because if we don't have it and we really start talking about, I love what you two gentlemen were talking about, we need to put it to bed. If that's what we need to do. We get some data internally. It amazed me that people in North Carolina want to get data in California. You're internal. And then you benchmark it with similar demographics. Size does not mean that's your demographic. Hello, leaders, hello, hello, hello. I did the same retreat, and it's funny, I was doing it for Charlotte Meck. And it was interesting that they were saying, well, this side of town, this side of town. And then they started, guess which counties they use? Anybody want to know? Wait, dur. You, Cumberland. And I said, well, I'm going to be down in a couple of weeks, and I can take it. Similarities, but not exactly the same. So as you begin to think about the things that occurred tonight, I love what Dr. Black did. Is she allowed the key stakeholders that are doing evidence-based day-to-day work to share with you what's really occurring in a high school? You know, like I said earlier, managing adults is like managing a grown daycare center. But managing people that think they're grown but aren't grown is a totally different set of demographics. If people say, well, Kissimmee, would you ever go back and be a high school principal? Well, my short answer or my long? We give you both of them, nope. Because that's not necessarily my greatest gift. And that is a different type of person that desires to do that. So as you look at the calendar, look at the agenda for today, you accomplished a lot. We really started looking at data and accountability. I love the fact that you started with the analytics, but it just wasn't any data. The thing that I also really love is it might have been small up there, but you could read it in the book. Somebody took some time to put a very good manuscript together. Listen to me. As a company, we do probably a hundred of these a year. That's a lot. This is only the second district that did it. You got it found and you put it in color? This is what people say. We don't have the money in our budget. Listen, this looks, this is what I see in corporations. So I don't know who did this, but give them a big round of applause for having good quality work. Is that you? I knew it must have been you. That's why you was asking me all these questions. What time you going to get here? I got you, I got you, I got you. The second thing I think is critically important is when you started talking about the graduation requirements and you benchmarked it in other locations and then you had people that are living it. And then, I think the principal of 71st said, and I've done this in another place before. I think you have to put everything on the table. We were talking, I think it was Peaking and Mr. Phil, we were talking at, and don't take this out of context, we were talking about church compared to a worship experience. You're probably going to have to do education as an experience now, just not a classroom sit-and-get. Because children have options and choices as well as parents do. So we have to be creative, and I love that that took place. And then, Dr. Wilson Norman, I love what you really did. Even though, now listen to this, leaders, even though you had the title, you gave somebody else the power. That says a lot about your leadership. Because you know, some people want power and they don't know what they're talking about. You put the experts that are boots on the ground to share, and then it was able to give dialogue and feedback. So tomorrow morning, we're going to start breakfast at 8:30. So at nine o'clock, our goal is to start at nine. So if you come in at 8:55, that's okay. That is absolutely okay. But I would encourage you to get whatever may be over there and bring it over here because my father's a Baptist minister. This is one of his best sermons. Charles, you'll love this. Blessed are the brief, for they shall be asked back. Because we've got work to do tomorrow. We've got a full agenda. I want to hear what your takeaways were from tonight. I want to hear what your takeaways were from tonight. That's your homework assignment. What were two takeaways? I sent this to Marissa. Marissa's already sent me, Marissa, my assistant, she already sent me some of the findings back, and she was, and she was in my ear. You're probably saying, you all doing that while that was going on? I, I was. I really was. You're probably saying, was he listening? No, I really kind of wasn't because that was somebody else's. Because I need to make sure that I'm on target for tomorrow. And I said, Marissa, I need to talk at nine thirty tonight because I need to make sure that what you said, what I sent you, you can read. Because some of you all have a doctoral manuscript. So we got to make sure we figure it out. You're probably saying, why is he sharing this? Because much is given, much is required. Sometimes you got to put a little bit more in to get a little bit more out. You wanted us to be, well, you might not want us. We desire to be here, so we need to give you the best of what we got. So tomorrow, I need your best. I need your best. I will share a few things that Marissa pointed out. She said, some of you all said, this was one that really blew my mind. Let's grow up and get along to do what's best for children. That was not kids to group. That was what one of your colleagues said. Let's grow up, get along, and do what's best for children. Everybody look up because you're about to tell me who said it. Just look up. Because some of you was about to do one of these. You're about to tell me who it was. Just look up. But I found that intriguing that somebody wrote that. We've got to create a safe space that you could share how you really feel and what's going on. I know there may be some individuals absent. We'll get them caught up, but hear me, regardless of who's present, who's absent, you've got to take this. If you're really going to have a true comeback, you got to take this and make sure you move forward so you don't get setback. You got to move forward. You got to keep moving forward. What are we going to talk about when we start looking at the five-year implementation, case studies, and we start looking at the budget process and talking about effective communication? If we begin to look at all these things and being a highly effective team, we're going to talk about that in the morning. So what time does someone have? Someone tell me what time it is?
Eight oh one.
Eight oh one. Dr. Conley, do you have anything? I was one minute over, but we started. Listen, we started seventeen minutes different. Notice I didn't say like we started seventeen minutes different. Does anyone else on the faculty and staff have anything in for the good of the order? Yes, that is definitely because you got to close your meeting. The question was, can you leave your stuff here? The fee is $1.99 for security, and yes, you can. So I think we need to call to order Madam Chair. Good old parliamentary procedure. Well, we'll see everybody at eight thirty. For those that have time management skills, time management deficiency, we'll see you at eight fifteen. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.